Good morning, everyone. Happy Monday, if there is such a thing. I will call to order this mayor commission work session. Today is Monday, March tenth, two thousand and twenty five. The time is ten A M. And the first item on the agenda is our annual investment report update. Mr. Frant.
Good morning, Mayor Commissioners, Bridgette Sufrant, Chief Financial Officer. I'm here this morning with John Raubach, our Treasury Manager, Avril Smith, our Assistant CFO, and we are also joined by John Grady, Managing Director and Partner, as well as our primary relationship manager from Public Trust Advisors, to present our third annual investment report. Per the city's charter, we have an investment committee consisting of internal personnel who meet quarterly to oversee the management of a portion of the city's assets. The assets that are currently under management with Public Trust Advisors are funds that are not needed at the present time based on cash flow projections, nor are they spoken for with a specific intent such as bond dollars. The annual investment report will cover a brief economic outlook from our friends at Public Trust, and then John will discuss the investment strategies covering our liquid portfolio, core portfolio, and the restricted cash in his presentation. John?
Thank you, Mr. Frant, for that introduction. Good morning, Mayor James.
Good.
And Commissioners, John Grady with Public Trust Advisors. It's a pleasure to be with you again this morning. And as we've done in the past, I'd love to start with just a few minutes of an economic update. And that might be a little difficult right now with so much uncertainty out there, but I'll do my best. And then we'll spend a few minutes and provide an update on your investment program. And there's great news there, as interest rates have remained elevated. So with that, jump right in. And of course, gross domestic product is a measure of our economic growth. And good news is, we finished the year with two point three percent growth. It was actually that fourth quarter, that first reading of that fourth quarter, I was right on target with economist's expectations. If we look back to the beginning of two thousand and twenty four and even to the beginning of two thousand and twenty three, we had the better part of twenty four months of economists actually projecting, predicting a slowdown in the economy, potentially a recession that did not play out, and that held true throughout two thousand and twenty four as well. One highlight I'll point out on this chart is this last quarter, consumer spending was the highest it was, the largest contributor to the economy going back to March of two thousand and twenty three. And so if we look at March of twenty three where the cursor is and compare it, very similar quarters where we had very strong consumer spending, but we actually had a contraction in the business investment in the economy. And generally, when we see a contraction, meaning businesses are spending less on products, plant, equipment, then the businesses overall are thinking that consumers are going to pull back on our spending, so they reduce their spending. So we saw that back in twenty three, and as I mentioned a moment ago, again, that's where you really started to hear a lot about a potential recession. We had smaller consumer spending early on, but really over the last several quarters, we've been what folks are saying resilient as consumers. That said, consumers have taken on records amount of debt to help us to keep these levels of spending. And so as we look into two thousand and twenty five, the level of debt, these higher interest rates are likely going to continue to put pressure on the consumer. That said, wage growth has been four plus percent for several months, and that, I believe, is what's helped our consumer spending, that higher wage growth. If we go back prior to the pandemic, wage growth was high two percent, low three percent range, and really throughout the pandemic and even in recent last couple of years, it's been in the four plus percent range. Again, that higher wage growth certainly has helped us as consumers to sort of weather this inflation. And speaking of inflation, this is our C P I chart that was just updated through January. And as many of you likely know and reading in the news, we had our fourth consecutive month of actual inflation creeping higher, so moving away from the Fed's two percent target. January overall C P I was three percent. It was two point four percent in September, and it's slowly been increasing over the last few months. And then the core, which factors, which takes out food and energy, which are more volatile, that was at three point three percent. That was just a tenth of a percent higher over the prior month. But both of these indicators, especially the core, the core is not broken through that that three percent threshold since March of twenty one. So very, very challenging. And the Fed, they can use monetary policy, as we know, to help with reducing the inflation. As you know, taking interest rates from essentially zero in two thousand and twenty, from two thousand and twenty to twenty two, and increasing that to five and a half percent through two thousand and twenty three. And we'll look at their, the current rate of four and a half percent and the current trend for the Fed in a moment. But looking at inflation, the one comment I want to make here that we're all reading about and we all know, as we go to the grocery store, go to the gas pump, or potentially buying a home or paying mortgage or rent, the three largest contributors to C P I continue to be shelter, which is either rent and or the cost of owning your home, food, and transportation. So three major areas where we spend our disposable income are the largest contributors to C P I, and that's really what's been challenging for the Fed in trying to help bring down this inflation. And we were joking before the meeting started, and I can assure you, I've mentioned the word tariff many, many times in my reviews over the last several weeks. And the reality is that there's just so much uncertainty with these tariffs and what is stated and then sort of retracted. And you may know, for instance, the auto tariffs were delayed again for a second month. We'll see what happens. But that's obviously going to play a big part as we look. Another comment I'll just make about that, not just tariffs, but whether it's law or executive order, will likely have a longer term impact on any of these policy changes. And I'll mention Chair Powell here in a moment. Just looking at the labor market, the good news is labor markets remain in fairly good shape. They certainly have cooled off when compared to the last couple of years. And in fact, job growth for two thousand and twenty four was two point two million new jobs compared to three million jobs the year before, but still healthy. And if we look back to two thousand and twenty three and twenty two, remember that the markets were, the labor markets were still recovering, if you will, adding back those twenty two million jobs that were lost in the early part of the pandemic. So when we see job growth in that one fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand a month range, it's actually considered decent for future economic growth. And then unemployment, as we can see in this bottom chart, bottom right, four percent was the latest reading, it was down a tenth of a percent. And really, looking historically, this chart just goes back three years to January of two thousand and twenty two. If we look back at the unemployment rate being at four percent, below four percent for most of the three-year period we're looking at here, that's very healthy from an unemployment rate perspective. Job participation is around sixty two and a half percent. That's, that's lower than what was seen prior to that, sixty five to sixty seven percent. And while sixty two to sixty five may not seem like a lot, it equates to millions of individuals that have decided not to reenter the workforce. So that's something that's being considered in the labor markets as well. So again, job growth continues to be healthy. Unemployment rate continues to be very good from a historical perspective. In fact, I believe the ten-year average for unemployment is four point seven five percent, so still very good news there. And so as we turn from a couple of economic indicators and over to the Fed and the Federal Open Market Committee in particular, as a reminder, this chart is showing us the dot plot. So every, every quarter, the Fed meets every six weeks, they'll meet again next, they'll meet again next week, and they'll update this dot plot as they do each quarter. All of these dots on this chart represent each individual member's expectations of where that overnight rate would be in the future. And generally speaking, if rates are expected to be higher from that member, they're likely thinking that inflation's higher, the economy's moving and growing, maybe more than they'd like to see, so they increase that rate. And if it's lower, then that individual member likely thinks that there might be a slowdown, and the Fed would need to cut that rate in order to spur economic growth. And then this blue line, of course, is the median of each of these members. So generally speaking, this is very normal what we see when the Fed is what we'll call an easing cycle, meaning they're lowering the rate in order to help economic growth. We were at five and a half percent through September, so through your fiscal year end, and we'll look at this with your interest earnings, overnight rates were at five and a half percent, very healthy, it was the highest rate in over twenty two, twenty two and two years. That rate is now four and a half percent. So in September, November, December meetings, the Fed has cut that rate. And the longer term rate is expected to be potentially three percent is that longer term target. And what does that mean? That just means that the thought is from the F O M C members that the Fed will need to cut rates over time, again, to spur, continue to keep the economy growing. A lot of data on this, let me just draw your eyes down to, on the left side, the yellow column, that bottom takes us actually to the end of twenty six, but really through the end of twenty five, you see this minus two point three, end of twenty six, minus almost four. Right now, the market's pricing anywhere from two to four rate cuts throughout two thousand and twenty five and into two thousand and twenty six. The fewer the rate cuts could mean a couple of things. One, that inflation is remaining higher than the Fed would like to see, so they're less likely to cut that rate. And then if, or the other side of this is if there is slower economic growth, potential recession, then the Fed would likely start to cut rates faster than what might be indicated here. This is nothing that we make investment decisions on, it's very volatile, it's never accurate, but it gives us an idea of what the market is thinking at any particular time. And you could see these numbers, they've actually, the number of rate cuts have increased in the last couple of weeks in particular because of the uncertainty with the economy. And in fact, Chair Powell spoke on Friday, and I'll just mention a couple of his quotes. One was, there's high uncertainty around the policy changes that are being proposed. And so there are a number of them being proposed, so which ones will actually take place and hold? And those are trade, immigration, fiscal policy, and various regulations. And so that uncertainty is really why there's so much volatility in the markets you've likely seen, in the equity markets and in the fixed income markets, a lot of, a lot of volatility in recent weeks. The good news is, with your portfolio, and we'll talk about this in just a moment, you are invested in very safe fixed income securities. I've jumped over a couple of slides, just to be respectful of your time, and looking at the U S Treasury curve here, just as a couple of, well, just over a week ago, or right around a week ago, late last week, you can see, we compare year over year, the blue line just as of March sixth, so we've got a flat yield curve. The good news, though, is we've remained above four percent for the last, well, we've got a lot of volatility, but we've bounced back up above four percent, at least until the last couple of days. What this means for your investment program, as we turn to that in a moment, is as we go from the left side to the right side, think of this part of the, of the yield curve as your overnight funds, your liquidity funds, local government investment pools, which are money market type strategies, and then you utilize treasuries for the most part. You have some high-grade corporate notes and a few agencies that remain in the portfolio. But when we're, we've been reinvesting in twenty four, we were focusing on treasuries, and really in that two to three-year area, and continuing to lock in yields for your investment portfolio to protect the core portfolio from a decline in rates. And so just lastly, before we jump into your investment program, I wanted to share with you what interest rates have looked like over the last two years. And as I mentioned, just a lot of volatility, really almost on a quarterly basis, quarter one, rates drop, quarter two, they bounce back up. And this has everything to do with market expectations, or if an event takes place in the market. For instance, if we go back to two years ago, you may remember the banking crisis with Silicon Valley Bank, and we saw markets drop quite a bit, they bounced back. And so whenever we're seeing expectations of future economic growth, we tend to see these rates move up and demand, and investors demanding higher rates for that growth. And then if we see rates starting to decline, that's again ties into expectations of slower economy potentially in the future. So lots of volatility in the last twenty four months. And then more recently, it was holding steady for the last few months, and then you can see this bit of a dip here in the last few days, and then really that has everything, again, to do with tariffs. You may have seen it, we were just looking at the markets again this morning, equity markets are off another few hundred points in each of the indices, between the Dow, the S and P, and the Nasdaq, they're down five, ten. Nasdaq's down, I believe, up to fifteen percent. They've given up a lot of the gains since, since the election in November. And then what we're seeing here with yields is a bit of a decline here, again, with some concerns about those things that we talked about with regard to policy change. So looking at that, and then looking over to your investment portfolio here, I'll jump into that, is keep in mind, when we look at this chart and we see the volatility, your investment program is much more disciplined, and while it's dynamic, there's not a lot of fluctuations in your investment portfolio, and that is by design. It's designed to provide you with the required liquidity to meet short-term needs, and then to invest some of your core assets, again, out between one and five years potentially to allow for you to lock in some of those yields to protect from this volatility that you see. So with that.
Before we go into that, we have a question.
Pardon me, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Before you move off the economic update, I was just curious, when you were going over the G D P chart, I was just curious if you could share a little bit more about the consumer spending, and if there are certain areas that we're seeing more consumer spending in than others.
It's, it's been really focused on housing, those three, those three that I mentioned, the shelter, the housing, the food, although you may have read, a lot of folks are sort of spending without regard to the future, which is what's contributing to this record amount of debt that we're taking on. So when you think of expensive vacations, maybe buying a car that's more expensive than what you've seen, that, a lot of that seems to be fueling the consumer spending. And why it seems to be higher than what it otherwise might be is really just tied to that debt, but a lot of it is buying higher ticket items than we might see normally. And, you know, I've read a number of articles in the Wall Street Journal and others where they interview folks, and the response from the individuals is, you know, we don't know what's going to happen, and we're going to enjoy the moment, which is certainly a change in perspective, I think, from prior generations and the way we think historically, but that seems to be the mindset of a lot of folks right now and why we see this spending. I kind of wonder when the music stops, who has a chair, if you will? But that's certainly, when you look at the debt, that, if you're asking me personally, the debts is the biggest concern. I've had that for a while, and I'm just quite amazed at consumer spending over the last several quarters in particular. So the thought is, you know, can, can the Fed manage a soft landing? They potentially can with monetary policy, but that doesn't mean that consumers who take out an excessive amount of debt are going to be, be able to come out of that. Thank you for that question, I apologize, I didn't pause for that.
Any other questions before we move on? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. So looking at your investment program, as Mr. Frant mentioned, we, we have a very strong partnership with the city, and we're grateful for that. We have a lot of communication with the team. In addition to the quarterly formal meetings that we have, like we had one just last week, we have conversations really on a monthly basis where we're talking with Mr. Raubach, the Treasury Manager, Avril, and Mr. Frant as well, just making sure that you have the amount of liquidity that you need, that you have the balance in the investment program between liquidity and what can be invested out. We actually did a little more investing in some U S treasuries during two thousand and twenty four based on those cash flow needs. And again, what that does is helps to lock in some of those four plus percent yields for two to three years in this case. Public Trust is your investment advisor. I'm fortunate to be one of your primary relationship managers, but I'm supported by a team of individuals. This last bullet point, really, we provide credit research, portfolio management, of course, operations, compliance. So we verify your portfolio is compliant every single day, provide that compliance checks when we're meeting with the investment committee, and then, of course, supporting with various reports that are helpful, not only for your internal needs, but also for your annual financial report. And get communication for us is most important, really is what we believe helps to make your investment program safe, efficient, and allows us to better manage those proceeds on your behalf. A lot of data on here, let me just summarize this particular page, or you have it, but there are certain statutes that govern public funds investments, the main one being chapter two eighteen, four one five. And so that, what that does is it provides a framework of how public fund entity, public entities, rather, can invest their public funds. And then entities generally have their own investment policy, just like the city does, and that the parameters within your investment policy are based on your risk tolerance, staying within the right security and asset classes, and ensuring that the management of those funds ties directly into what your policy states. And then the other statute that I'll mention is chapter two eighty. What that guarantees is that, but it makes sure that public funds are invested in banks that are qualified public depositories. And why that is important is that in order to be a qualified public depository, for every dollar of public funds that you take in as a deposit, you have to put a percentage of that into a state insurance pool, so that provides some safety from bank deposits as well. So looking at, at your investment program, and when we're looking at investment decisions and working with the, the investment committee and the staff, it's determining what are the, what's the timing of the sources and uses of these funds, again, tying back to your investment policy. And then lastly, looking at market conditions, right, like we just talked about, the economy. Again, we're not making investment decisions to try to tie the market in any way, but of course, we're looking to contain, maintain a diversified, disciplined investment program within that narrow universe of permitted investments. Your portfolio is well diversified, so I'll start with the first part. This is your liquidity portfolio, and your liquidity portfolio is around forty four percent as of September thirtieth of your overall assets. It's generally your lower point of the year, October is typically usually the lowest, but September gives you an idea, it's just before you start to receive your ad valorem revenues. And these investments are where you're usually pulling to, to fund your short-term expenses. So with this particular portfolio, if we look down at the chart down at the bottom here, you can see these various investments. The top three are local government investment pools, and just as a reminder to you all, those are money market fund strategies, they're triple A rated that the city uses, and these three funds are actually designed for public entities. So unlike an S E C registered money market fund that might be used nationally, the nice thing about L G I Ps, they have the triple A rating, they provide daily liquidity, they have a stable net asset value, meaning that you put a dollar in, you put a, pull a dollar out with interest. And so those are the primary, and then lastly is your T D bank, that's your bank deposit, those are your bank deposit funds, again, a qualified public depository. So very safe investment strategies with daily liquidity with this portion of your portfolio. The great news is, through September, the weighted average yield was five point two six percent. It had everything to do with that federal open market, the federal funds open market rate of five and a half percent through September. So really, throughout your fiscal year, your short-term funds earned well over five percent, and that provided some great interest earnings. And you can see the interest earnings here on the far right-hand side, significantly higher than a year ago, and I can assure you, very much higher than two to three years ago when interest rates were closer to zero. So these liquidity funds from two thousand and twenty two, really through two thousand and twenty three and twenty four, went from earning very, very little, being close to zero, to earning, you know, just over twenty two million for the last fiscal year, based on that five-plus percent interest on those funds. Any thoughts from the Commissioner or Mayor on the liquidity portfolio?
Any questions at this point? Okay.
Thank you. The balance of your portfolio for your operating funds outside of the restricted dollars, of course, is your core portfolio. So with this portfolio, the idea here is, again, to use the yield curve, really out to five years, in this last year, we focused really between two to three years, and then we had some legacy holdings from the, a couple of years that were in that three to four-year range. So if we look at this portfolio, we utilize a zero to five-year strategy. So what that means is, we have securities that we invest, and then as they mature, we work closely with the city's team and determine your cash flow needs, looking at where your preference is along the yield curve, and then we make recommendations and reinvest those funds. In addition to reinvesting funds that matured during the fiscal year, we, as you can see in that top chart, we invested an additional one hundred and twenty million in this core portfolio in what I would consider fairly short-term, between two to three years, in U S treasuries. And what that did was, again, helped us to lock in some of those yields and help us to have a balanced portfolio so that you don't have all of your assets in a liquidity strategy. What happens with that is if you get too heavily weighted in very short-term securities and yields start to fall, you feel that impact immediately. Those rates reset every day, whereas this balanced portfolio allows you to take advantage of both increasing and then protecting you against decreasing interest rates. If I look at the bottom, well, let's focus on this third bullet point here, just looking at the, the net income of this portfolio alone, it increased from two point nine million in your prior fiscal year to, to just around thirteen million in fiscal year twenty four. So a significant increase in income. Part of that was reinvesting securities in these four, average of four and a half percent during the fiscal year, in addition to contributing more to this portfolio based on your cash flow needs. And that's, again, providing you a more balanced approach. I mentioned forty four percent in liquidity, fifty six percent in this portfolio through September. It's more of a fifty fifty once you start to receive your ad valoreums and start to spin those down through your fiscal year. You're very well diversified, I mentioned safety, liquidity, and then yield. And that third tier, if you will, as an investment objective, is important, and why it's important to not just have everything in a bank deposit or an L G I P, but to have a very diversified investment program. So as I, I'm highlighting these boxes, so you'll see in your chart, thirty eight percent of this portfolio is going to mature in this fiscal year, so we'll continue to have ongoing conversations about how to reinvest those. And then you can see the balance of this portfolio between one to two-year, two to three-year, and three to four years. The other comment about that, you remember the flat yield curve that we, we showed earlier? That was another reason for really focusing on that two to three-year area. You weren't being paid an additional yield at the time to go out further, and so that provided a good opportunity to invest in that part of the curve. And lastly, for your operating program, looking at this in aggregate, just wanted to highlight here, as of fiscal year end, your market value, they're at the top left. When we look at your weighted yields on the top right, you can see over four percent, that utilizes the five-plus percent of liquidity funds, and then the just below four percent in the longer-term portfolio, but that's been continuing to increase as we reinvest in those higher yields, as I've mentioned over the last couple of years. But if you look at the overall duration of your aggregate portfolio, you're less than a year, so you're actually very liquid overall with this balanced investment portfolio. And then this chart here in the middle really just combines the liquidity and your longer term, so we have two portfolios, we essentially have been managing these as one, and we'll look to combine these over time to have that one to five-year investment program in place, but right now, they're in two separate funds, and you can see the yields, and then again, the weighted yield of the overall investment program. And then looking at, again, in aggregate, very balanced, as I mentioned, forty nine percent in zero to three months, and the other fifty one percent really laddered out, really primarily between this one to two and two to three years, having the largest allocation outside of liquidity funds to provide that balance. And as you can see, once you get outside of this shorter term, this gray represents L G I P, those local government investment pools, and the dark blue in this chart, those are treasuries. So you can see you're primarily in treasuries with this overall investment portfolio. You're highly rated, and as I mentioned earlier, compliant with your investment policy and with state statutes, it's important for us to mention that to you. And then just one more slide, and we'll pause for, we also just want to provide you a summary of your restricted assets and cash and bond proceeds. These are also invested in local government investment pools and a couple of bank deposits. These are also by design needed for short-term uses, so those are used, whether they're restricted or used for project funds from those bond proceeds. So let me pause there and see if there are any questions from the Mayor or the Commission on the investment program itself.
Commissioner Warren, Under Commissioner Wambra.
Thank you. On slide number eight, in the upper right-hand corner, there are two numbers that I'd just like you to elaborate on. The net pending transactions and the, the year-over-year difference for net unrealized gain.
Yes, yes, ma'am, thank you for that. I, sorry, I didn't address that in that, on that slide. So the net pending transactions, when you see these amounts, they're either a security that settled at that month or quarter end and then hasn't, and then it'll show up in the next, literally on the next day, so September thirtieth. When we see an amount of forty eight thousand or so, that generally is the interest that was earned in the money market fund balance, so that was earned during the month, so it's pending, and then generally on the first business day of the following month, that is paid out. So that's why you see both at nine twenty, of nine thirty twenty three and nine thirty twenty four, you generally will see an amount of a net pending transaction that's just simply due to something that's maturing and or some interest that's earned. And then, great question on the unrealized gain-loss. So this has everything to do with book value versus market value. So book value is essentially what you paid for a security, and then it's amortized over time, so it's, think of it as pretty much what we paid for it. And then the market value is, what would that, what would you be able to sell it for that particular day? It's not a cumulative number, it's just what the market is dictating on that day. So if we look back to last year, you can see that rather large number. It was even larger the year before, and that was a result of securities that you owned in the portfolio were much lower yield. So think about twenty two, twenty three, we're buying securities that were between one and two, two to three percent. And then as rates move up, the value of your bond that you're holding becomes less valuable because the market can buy a higher-yield security rather than buy the security that you're holding. So the mark, the way that this works is it, it finds that equilibrium number. The good news is, a couple of things happened from twenty three to twenty four. We saw a lot of volatility as we showed on that chart. But the main part of why this was such a drastic difference is that rates stabilized towards the end of the year, but also because you have a much larger percentage of your portfolio invested at these current higher yields. So when So in twenty-three, you had a high percentage of maybe two to three percent yielding securities, maybe even less. And now you have a lot of your portfolio earning four percent, three and a half to four and a half percent. In fact, in twenty-four, we were fortunate, I believe, to buy a couple of securities over five percent. And that's a long answer, but to summarize that, that unrealized gain-loss represents what you're holding on your book and if you were to sell it that day. Last comment on that. We don't like to see a negative number. What that really means, though, is if you were to sell that portfolio and recognize that loss, you would be reinvesting at those higher yields if you just turned her out and reinvested it. So it is a net zero gain if you sold it and then reinvested it. The same is true if you have an unrealized gain. So if we go through twenty-five and we're here next year and rates are lower, you're going to have likely a pretty decent unrealized gain. If you sold that gain and recognized it, you'd be reinvesting at lower-yielding securities. So they really do offset each other. It's really the income, the interest earnings that you have, which makes up your income for the portfolio. So I'm glad you asked a question. Thank you for reminding me to talk about that. But the main focus is on those interest earnings, and that's why we're going to show you those dollars that you've earned. And in fact, if we look at that number on this slide, on the far-right-hand side, thirty-five point one, I almost did it again, Bridgette. You ever remind me last year? Thank you.
I was holding it, I wasn't going to call you out.
Thank you. This is twice the interest earnings of the year before. And so you've had substantial increases in interest. The market has been great to help us with that, but I do tie it back to Ms. Soufrant, Ms. Ravak, Ms. Avril Smith, and the team, and through the communication that we have, and keeping these funds invested appropriately has a lot to do with the increase in your interest earnings in this market. You could earn a lot, but if you, you could get caught off-guard if you're not actively managing these assets, and this team does that on behalf of the city. Thank you for these questions.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. To that point, I had a question about the local government investment pool and the list of banks on slide ten. I just, I noticed that they're all, looks like national banks there, and I was just curious if we have any strategy to include any local or regional banks?
So if I, if I look, they are primarily, I believe Valley Bank is more of a regional bank. They have a pretty good presence in Florida. That would certainly, we could certainly work with you and the team and include additional banks. That is up to the city, Ms. Soufrant.
So a lot of these, when you go out into the bond market, there's stipulations within those agreements on the banking depository where you put those proceeds at that time. So these are all older agreements that the money is just where it was stipulated at that point in time. We do work with our QPDs, the Qualified Public Depositories, and we generally look to invest that way and work on our local relationships with our banks if we have a need for something. Right now, we really have been in the treasuries market because that's where, you know, the day of emailing banks or reaching out for quotes on CDs is a futile effort right now because the rates can't compare with the treasuries at this moment. But I ventured to guess we're going to be going back into that type of investment market again within the next nine months to a year potentially. So we will definitely be touching base with our local banks as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you so much for the presentation. It all looks like really great news, so I'm just wondering if you could summarize this. Is that what you would take from this, that this is, looks really like great news year over year from last year? And any other summarizing you can do just to give us the highlights?
Ms. Soufrant, you want to start?
I mean, I'm incredibly proud of my team. John and Avril have done a great job in staying on top of the market and coming up with questions, no matter how interesting they are, John. But I love the news updates. I love being able to talk about it, and then we call John Grady and have further conversation. We have worked really hard coming in with new staff in these management positions and finance and truly diving into the type of funds and where they are invested. And by type of funds, I mean what is our bond proceeds? Where are those? And what projects do we need to be discussing on the bond proceeds? Capital funding, utilities funding? So really diving into that. And then we've been having conversations with the departments directly about cash flow. So we really didn't have all of those tools in place on understanding where every penny is and what the purpose was of each penny so that we can better guide and in some cases urge along some of the departments to move certain things forward so that we can understand the cash flow to then go to John, which you saw in this last year, where we went, okay, we have, we've identified ten million that we aren't going to need right now in the next six months or in the next year. The cash flow of the new budget and the new taxes coming in, we can balance this. So we've been projecting our liquid funds and our needs from a budgetary perspective and a capital perspective in the last year, and that has shown gains where we've been able to really capitalize with the market and will be planning as we move forward to make sure that we are prepared for the next step and the changes as we move. But proud of the team, and as much as that thirty-five-million-dollar number is a beautiful number, keep in mind that a lot of those dollars are directly allocated to capital or utilities or bond proceeds. So for, as we go into budget and we're talking the general fund, roughly five million of that thirty-five million was in the general fund, and that will come forward as it goes into the fund balance for that discretionary funding conversation.
Speaking of budget season, and this is only tangentially related, but I think it's something that we need to keep our eye on. There is a conversation going on in Tallahassee. In fact, our governor promoted it about the elimination of property taxes. So Ms. Johnson, as you and your team are going through the budget, I'd like for you to prepare for me and the commissioners a report on what would happen to our city if we weren't able to collect ad valorem property taxes. We need to have that data because as the debate continues in Tallahassee, we need to let our lobbyists know the devastating effect it would have. And you match that against the services that we provide. The governor in his statement seemed to suggest that the city's just collecting all this money and sitting on a hoard of cash. No, we provide a lot of services to our citizens, our residents, and even the businesses who call West Palm Beach home. So I would like, and as I said, it's only tangentially related to this conversation, but as part of the stress test, which I've asked senior staff to undergo with what's coming out of Washington DC, we need to add to that list the worst-case scenario, if, God forbid, the city was not able to collect property taxes. I have no idea what we do, but I guess I need you all to tell us what we do, or what we couldn't do. Yes?
Yes. Fay Johnson, City Administrator for the record. Mayor, we will do that, but I also want to take this opportunity to just kind of share with the board, and you and I have had maybe just a brief conversation on the exercise that we have been going through, given the whole national scene about Doge and seemingly it creeping down into state government. You know, we have been doing a number of financial analysis on what ability the city would have if we find ourselves in an unfortunate situation where we have several unfunded mandates that we need to then backfill because money has been taken from the city at either the federal level or the state level. So we've had a series of work sessions, and we have those options laid out. So we will do an analysis of what it would look like separate and apart from that if the property tax revenue goes away. But one of the other things that we have kept our eye on, and it's a small impact at this point, which would then be escalated if it goes into a full removal of property taxes, and that is, and I'm going to ask Ms. Soufrant to help me articulate this because I know I probably will articulate it incorrectly. But as, there was an amendment that was approved that allows for a CPI on homestead. So it increases that exemption, it increases. So what we have done is to calculate how much that translates into lost property tax revenue, and that number is around two hundred and forty thousand a year. So we are tracking that, and then that's two hundred and forty thousand less that we will start receiving into the general fund. So we'll take that analysis and then do a full property tax loss stress test. Now, did I articulate that correctly?
I will simply add that the two forty is the first year of implementation. So going into FY twenty-six budget, that is our first year where we're taking that first adjustment. After that, if we just do a general average increase, we're looking at probably an additional one hundred and twenty thousand dollars on top of that two forty each year growing because it's taking your twenty-five-thousand-dollar homestead and increasing that by CPI, the value across the city by CPI in order to equate that into people's tax bills.
And that's already in effect. So we started tracking that once that passed so that, you know, if we were going to be suffering, you know, a real big hit, we wanted to be on top of it. But certainly, Mayor, we will do that kind of test for you.
Yeah, and commissioners, what, we mentioned a stress test. What I asked my senior team to do a couple of weeks ago is to basically look at what's being proposed in Washington, and we know that what's being proposed won't necessarily be what happens. But I think we need, we as a city need to be prepared. So I've asked them to do a, you know, worst-case scenario. If these policies that are being debated in DC do come to pass, what impact that would have on our particular finances? So they're undergoing that analysis now. We'll probably have something to report out on you, to you at the appropriate time. Is it a fear tactic? No, because I think it's, in my view, it's just, it's wisdom in trying to anticipate what might happen. This is uncertain times, and we would be the city government folly if we just closed our eyes and pretended none of this is happening. So we need to be prepared, worst-case scenario. The other reason why I want this information is that as, as the, as the conversation continues in DC, we as a city need to be prepared to talk to our residents and the businesses that call West Palm Beach home as to the impact of this debate on the city as that conversation is happening so that they, to the extent possible, will have the data and can help us as we lobby against many of these. But we need to have data. We need to be armed with that, and not just anecdotal, not just woe is me, but no, we need to have hard, fast data to show what impact it would have on West Palm Beach, these various policies. So we're trying to get ahead of it and be proactive and anticipate, and then have that data available so as we, as the debate rages in Washington, we can engage allies, local allies, who may have influence up in DC to help us, to help educate the policymakers in DC as to what this will look like for our city. And it looks like obviously we'll need to have similar types of debates as the conversation waves in Tallahassee. Listen, cities are under attack for whatever reason. I was on a podcast last week, you know, the bulk of the population resides in cities, the bulk of economic activity resides in cities. I don't know why legislatures at the national level and now even at the state level are attacking cities. This is, cities where the action is. And so I don't know why we should, we, we, cities are under attack, but for whatever reason, we are, and we need to be prepared and come up with strategies on how to wage that battle. Commissioner Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. I certainly appreciate the comments that you shared with us this morning. I think that they're very important. And it's interesting that you said the things that you did because one of my mottos is anticipate and prepare. And I think, very simply put, anticipate and prepare. And it shows great stewardship and leadership to be able to have the foresight to say, these are the things that are happening, we need all of the information, and then to ensure that our city is prepared for whatever comes because we do know that these are some uncertain times that we're facing. So thank you very much for that. And I'd also like to just take a moment to say great job on the information that has been reported, and I want to express my appreciation for the transparency. And I express that to the entire team, to you, Ms. Soufrant, as well as to you, Madam Administrator. Thank you all so much for ensuring that this information was very clear and easy to understand and very detailed. I think that's important.
Yes, it is great news. Kind of got buried, I buried the lead there when I went on to the horror stories that we were preparing for. This report is wonderful, it's great. I hope we're in the same position next year with a similarly good report. I just don't know. I just don't, we don't know. So, but yes, for the job that has been done up to this point, fantastic, and it's good to have this information available to us. Fingers crossed that we can have a similarly positive report next year. Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, I do want to just, I want to underscore one takeaway. So of the thirty-five million we have in interest earning, the takeaway is that only five million of that is the general fund. We won't have thirty-five million in discretionary funds that will be in the general fund, only five million of that thirty-five million.
And thank you, that's recognized, and I think we probably, commissioners probably need to think about whether we need to increase our reserves going forward too. And like, we'll see what the data looks like, but yeah, we may have to make some decisions that we aren't used to making in budget season, and so we'll have that conversation at the appropriate time. Okay, thank you very much, John, Dean.
Mayor, commissioners, Madam Administrator, Bridgette, Ms. Soufrant, thank you for the partnership with the city. I'm very grateful, and I speak on behalf of our entire firm, and I hope to see you again next year with some great news. Thank you.
Yes, we're hopeful as well. Okay, I'll take a few minutes for the transition, but the next item is Coleman Park Neighborhood Plan Presentation. From Mr. Clemente and his team.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Rafael Clemente, I'm the Executive Director of Palm Beach Venture Philanthropy, a division of Quantum Foundation, and it is so good to be back in this room with you all. It's been a little while.
Quit lying.
Well, you know what I realized is that I had the great opportunity to work so closely with the leadership of this city for a long time, and it's easy to forget how important and how hard the work of leadership, especially today at the municipal level, is. And thank you all. Like, this is really probably the most challenging time for cities, and I can say, as a resident of your city, I'm grateful for having you all at the helm, so.
Well, thank you for saying that.
I am here today to present the Coleman Park Action Plan. This plan is a, an update of a couple of previous efforts from prior administrations and is the culmination of a lot of community engagement. Many of you in the room, very much, very obviously the neighborhood stakeholder group, as well as many other partners from local to county level, philanthropy, you name it. We wanted to make sure we had as much information as possible. Why is philanthropy stepping into the field of community investment and impact? Well, to quote a colleague of Mayor James, and this made a very big impression on me, I think I've told Mayor twice this, Ray McGuire, who was here with the African-American Mayors Association a couple of months back during a fireside chat. "Public-private partnerships, including philanthropic organizations, will drive real tangible change in cities faster than the public sector can do alone." And he went on to add, "I cannot overstate the importance of public-private partnerships." Well, I'm happy to say that the board and staff of the Quantum Foundation is your partner in making your city a community of opportunity for all. in making your city a community of opportunity for all. Palm Beach Venture Philanthropy is a division of Quantum Foundation. And before I go further, I want to recognize my colleagues, Camden Bags, Dominique Drummer, and Ontario Johnson. Many of you know him as OJ. I love to say Ontario because that's such a great name. Palm Beach Venture Philanthropy was formed as a new division of Quantum to complement what is traditional grant making. And I arrived at the team, with the team, seven months ago and have worked from the incredible foundation that Camden built in the years prior to my arrival there to establish this as an opportunity for Quantum to play a leading role in many ways of bringing investment to communities of concentrated poverty. What does that mean, or persistent poverty? Persistent poverty is a definition commonly used to define the impact of poverty on a community. Meaning twenty percent of the population or more has been in poverty at or below the poverty level for thirty years or more. This is generational poverty. And West Palm Beach has four of the twenty-four census tracts in Palm Beach County that fall into the definition of persistent poverty. What is our strategy and why do we focus on neighborhoods of persistent poverty? Because so much of your health outcome, and Quantum is focused on health and community well-being, so much of the health outcomes that affect your well-being, your life expectancy are rooted in place, in the place you live. If you are born and raised in a neighborhood of concentrated poverty, the likelihood that you are going to experience a quality of life equal to if you were not is very low. In fact, fifty percent of the, of the social determinants of health that determine your well-being are rooted in place in your zip code effectively. Shocking, quite honestly, like I've learned so much. I thought I knew a lot about city planning, but really these things go down so much deeper than all the things we typically measure as, at least as an urban planner. So for many years now, Quantum has worked very effectively in these three areas. Primarily access to healthcare and social services, but also education and childcare and affordable housing. But the other seven of the top ten factors are place-based issues, community-based, that need a different type of investment. And looking at this quote from the National Institutes of Health, social determinants of health, it's time to consider the causes of the causes. These issues, these factors directly influence a person's overall well-being and health outcomes. So Quantum, being a traditional grant maker for almost three decades now, wants to get on the other side of these issues, get upstream of the causes, so we're not just providing services, we're trying to eliminate the factors that are driving people into need. So this is, this is the neighborhood of Coleman Park. It's bounded on the east and west by railroad tracks, the CSX and the FEC. That's an important point I want you to remember. And it's bounded to the north by Twenty-Fifth Street and Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard in the south. If you are born in Coleman Park today, your life expectancy is fourteen years shorter than the average of Palm Beach County. It's CDC data. This is an unacceptable data point. This is not unique to West Palm Beach, I'll just say. This isn't a cause of city inaction or action, this is a statistic that exists across our nation. And before I talk about how we can work together to undo this, I thought it was important to talk about how we got here. So a hundred years ago, the folks who sat in the seats, you are sitting in, our city leadership, they put in place a plan, the city's first master plan, that included land use and zoning. That included land use and zoning drafted by a gentleman named John Nolan. And in that plan, of course, this was in the nineteen twenties, and Florida was the south at the time. This quote here, the question of providing for the future Negro population of West Palm Beach is one of the important problems that needs to be solved. And they thought that the way that we could solve the problem was to designate, like every other city in the south, I assume every other city did, was to restrict where people could live. And even though a Supreme Court ruling several years prior to this plan being enacted said that this was illegal, Mr. Nolan said, I'll tell you how to do it. But such districts can be established and every facility provided therein to encourage the settlement of the people for which they are intended. And this was done with infrastructure. We've all seen how highways have been used or other, other built environment things could be used. In this case, the plan recommended using railroads to bound off the neighborhood so it couldn't expand. So this is the area, it's hard to see the hash mark part, but this is the fold-out map from that document from nineteen twenty-three. And you can see here at the bottom, it says colored district area set aside. And that entire area literally was framed by railroad tracks. I could show it all in detail, but I know I don't have that much time. So I'll show you the portion just closest to downtown. So Banyan Boulevard is, you can see Banyan Boulevard hooking in from Australian Avenue by the water plant. That's the CSX on the left, the FEC on the right. And Flagler's Spur originally existed, still there. In fact, if you walk Rosemary north of Banyan, you can see a piece of the railroad track sticking out of the ground still. North is up, Mayor James. So that is the southern end of the Northwest neighborhood.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Well, I saw you looking, I saw you looking.
Just me, I'm the only one, okay.
I saw you, I saw you.
No, 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 because before you go further, I want you to go back three slides. And I want you to let us, let this sink in, go back one more slide. One more. All right, let this sink in, everyone. This was part of the city's master plan back in nineteen twenty. And I don't want us to rush through this. This is intentional, institutional, all right? So when people talk about the lack of progress in some of these communities, that was designed. And I don't know if it's this page or the next one that talks about, they didn't have, what does it talk about? They didn't have running water?
I'll get to this slide.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant, I'm sorry, sorry. But, 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 again, I don't, now, in this day and time, we know history is not allowed to be taught, okay? This is history. This is, this is, to me, it's mind-boggling, but it is stuff that was in writing. This was an intentional policy of our city, okay? And so as we try to do what we do, building a community of opportunity for all, this is what we have to fight. This is the starting point for these neighborhoods, you know, they didn't start at the starting line. They started way back before they could even get up to the starting line because that's, the deck was stacked against them intentionally. And you'll see later about how there was such a significant lack of, of benefits in those defined communities. But that was to deal with the Negro problem. And again, it's the South, it was a different time, I get all that. But I don't think we should forget what the thinking was by some of the leaders of this city back in the twenties. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, this is, this is important and I am, I'm happy in our conversation prior to this, that you advised, that I keep this in. Because this, this is important stuff. It is, for me, it is frankly hard to discuss because it brings up a lot of emotion. It's intimidating to even be working on these things now because they are so deeply rooted in our, in our communities and in our national history. And they become these flashpoints, right, socially and public dialogue. But these are really important things that we are grappling with. So this area was designated as the area for the black population at the time.
Negro population.
The Negro population. And the railroad, railroad tracks were used on the south, north, east, and west. If you go to the north end, if you go to Twenty-Fifth Street, railroad tracks crisscross that neighborhood in every direction. Interchanges and several, several sections of track. And then this is another fold-out section of the plan. And you can see I've blown it up, the key and the different neighborhoods are called out, including what is now El Cid, Grand View Heights and Flamingo Park, the downtown district. And then you see number four and five, what they call the medium white and Negro neighborhoods. And the notation of will not improve, meaning the city will not make investments for infrastructure improvements in these neighborhoods. So that is the area on the plan. And you can see a street pavement map, an existing conditions map of the time this plan was drafted. There was, for the vast majority of that area, particularly north of Banyan, there was no street pavement. There was no water system and there was no sewer system. Even though these were neighborhoods that were occupied and quite densely occupied, quite frankly. Infrastructure that is necessary for people to live in a neighborhood was not present here. And the city at the time made the notation, we're not going to improve this area.
Okay, go back because I want those two slides to also sink in. Go back to the one before. What this is showing, that they weren't even paving the streets in these neighborhoods. And that was intentional, that was the plan. We're not gonna pave the streets and go to the next one. We're not gonna provide running water. We're not gonna provide a sewer system, can you believe that? To deal with the Negro problem. That is, this isn't, this isn't anecdotal. That's the data right there, ladies and gentlemen. That is the history of West Palm Beach. Again, we don't bring this up because we're trying to make anyone feel bad or feel guilty. But it just shows how far we have, how much, how much work there has, we've had to be do, we've had to do.
In fact, Tuesday night of last week, Commissioner Warren joined us, everyone else here, for a community walk, a safety audit, which we walked around the neighborhood in the dark and looked at areas that we could help bring investments to improve in. And a young lady who was there mentioned that the area that was now a planter bed had once been a gutter where people brought out their waste to throw into the gutter because many of the houses didn't have tapped-in sewer lines. She remembered that, or that was passed on to her, a young woman, yeah. So this is the, the community that includes the Northwest plus the city in Coleman Park today. And you can see it in context, the larger context with the city. And I'll point out, I was curious because I live in Flamingo Park and Grand View Heights, Flamingo Park neighborhood, and have for twenty-five years now. And you all know me, I ride my bicycle everywhere to the greatest extent possible. And so I, I, I see the city a little differently than most people do. Distances that are sort of wash over you if you're driving are very present in my mind because I'm using my own energy to cover those distances. And the distance from Belvedere Road, which is two blocks south of where I live, or three blocks south of where I live, from Belvedere Road to Banyan Boulevard is about a mile and a half. From Banyan Boulevard to Twenty-Fifth Street is equally about a mile and a half. So the north end of Coleman Park is almost exactly the same distance from Banyan as my house is from Banyan, from north to south. To go east and west out of the neighborhood south of Banyan, there are ten or twelve roads that cross the FEC east and west. North of Banyan, there are only four roads that cross the FEC, aside from, like, aside from a major arterial like Lakes. But neighborhood streets, there are only four. And we all know, working with railroads, it's very, very difficult to get, I know the city has tried very hard to get the railroad to FEC to allow additional crossings. But their requirements are extensive, they require you to close two for every one you open. So that's a challenge and it does present challenges for all the neighborhoods north of Banyan Boulevard because access, interconnectivity with the rest of the city, these are all things that bring value to a community.
But again, that was intentional. I mean, so on one of the earlier slides, they wanted to use the railroads to an effect, pin in the Negro people to a certain area.
Correct. So, so here we are, we are a hundred years, a hundred and two years down the road with dramatically different, a dramatically different mentality as a city and as a community, thank God. And to quote our board chairman, Bill Meyer, we are working toward the fruitful execution of an aggressive agenda. And I am here today to present this plan for two reasons. I want you to know what we're working on in your city, naturally. But more importantly, over the coming months and years, myself and this team are going to come back to the city and ask for your support and collaboration. In some cases, yes, that will mean money. In most cases, that will mean advisement, staff time, direction, feedback, participation in chasing down grant dollars and other things. Because this, this plan is a holistic approach to community improvement. And as I said earlier, that partnership, Quantum, you know, when I joined the team at Quantum, I didn't quite realize what a heavy hitter organization that is. But Quantum brings some tremendous resources to the table. And I think that we are going to be a very strong partner for the city in this, in this regard. So the updated plans, many of you remember the Stull and Lee Plan. If you're like me and you've been around for a long time, that was the first effort to look at economic and social conditions in the, in the historic Northwest Pleasant City. And then what they called the Tamarind Avenue Extension. And then in two thousand nine, Gliding Jackson, under Mayor Frankel's administration, drafted what was a very, very good plan, the Coleman Park Neighborhood Improvement Plan. Some of the findings of that plan were implemented, some were not. Administration's changed, staff changes, I know how things go, stuff gets washed downstream. So we updated that plan. A lot has changed naturally, we're in a different world in twenty twenty-five than we were in two thousand nine. Population has increased, median age has gone up, the neighborhood is more diverse. Incomes have gone up, but rent and housing costs have gone up dramatically, faster than anything else has. And by the way, you all have an executive summary of that document. The plans and, the projects and recommendations in this plan align with the four pillars of the Purpose Built Communities model. Rise Coleman Park, of which OJ is part of the team, is a, is a, is a very, is a vital partner that will remain in that neighborhood when the Palm Beach Venture Philanthropy team moves on to another community. So we wanted to make sure the plan aligns with the Purpose Built Model, economic vitality, housing, wellness, and education. And they're broken down, if, if an item is in green, it is underway already, yay, go us. If it's in orange, it is in the, in the, not, it's beyond just the planning phase. It's actually teed up and already in motion. So short term, we have established a public maintenance initiative, picking up trash. Our first effort was over two tons picked up. And I know that sounds like a lot, but I'll tell you, having been your DDA director, that's, that's, it sounds like a lot, but we pick up two tons out of downtown like every other month. So that's, it is a lot, but it's not as much as you think. We've also conducted a market study, which will be ready probably this week, which I'll, once we vetted it and made sure it is what it is, we're going to share it with you. A market study is what sorts of housing projects and investments will bring real ROI, like that we can measure in dollars and cents to the community, job creation, et cetera. Also, what types of businesses, as we look to help businesses again flourish on Tamarind Avenue, which was a flourishing business district at one time. How do we bring them back there? What types of businesses will work in our market? And what types of subsidies do we need to bring to the table to help them survive? Same thing happens downtown, it's going to happen in Northwood as well, I'm sorry, in Coleman Park and Northwood. Midterm, implement a streetscape improvement program through tactical urbanism strategies. One of my favorite things in the world, as a super nerd. You may see soon wildflowers blooming in certain areas that may or may not be public property in Coleman Park. I may or may not have had a hand in that, but they're just wildflowers. They're weeds with flowers on them. Economic vitality, a longer-term play, advocate for an expansion of the Lincoln Road Streetscape Project, connect Seventeenth Street through, business incubation programs, explore the feasibility of a CDFI, Community Development Finance Institution, and advocate for an upgrade of the Tamarind Streetscape Project. I know you have a pavement conditions map, pavement conditions presentation coming up. That's one thing, that's one thing we'll come back and ask in, in, in time because that's a key piece in, again, attracting investment to a place, is the Because that's a key piece in, again, attracting investment to a place is the, your public investment drives private sector investment very powerfully. Housing, short-term, stabilizing what we've got, expanding that Lincoln Road Model Block Program. Longer-term, can we improve the facades of the housing? There's great housing there, it needs to be upgraded. That's, that house is on State Street, just a little bit to the west of Tamarind Avenue. Beautiful property, large lot. And then on the bottom is a rendering of what could be. And that isn't, that isn't rental, that is, those are townhouses. We are working very hard to incentivize, to create opportunities for and incentivize homeownership in these neighborhoods. Wellness, shorter-term, institute a model block, I'm sorry, a block captain initiative, work on bringing financing to the table for a medical clinic. Fresh food is a major piece of well-being in a community. And yes, Coleman Park, like so many other places, is a food desert for that. Tree planting initiatives, and then longer-term, creating that aging-in-place program. From a walkability perspective, once we get that Tamarind Avenue corridor back up with businesses and other, and, and other types of ground floor active uses, Coleman Park is your most walkable neighborhood in your city, I'll just tell you. The bones of that place are, it, it is set up better than any other neighborhood in West Palm Beach for walkability and connectivity, once that main street is thriving again. And it is, it will be again. Education, short-term, create opportunities for youth, our youth reading and literacy program. I'm very excited to report that we are working with the Taylor Moxie Foundation to bring a library, one of their mobile library units to Coleman Park. And yes, the green one there, we have, we have obtained funding for that through a grant, again, with our great partner, West Palm's great partner, the Knight Foundation. What does participation look like? And yes, I do all my own stunts, even my own editing on PDFs that weren't very cooperative with me. So under that city participation column, and you'll see funding sources, they're not there because we don't know what they are yet, but we are building that, and as I said, I will be back. And economic development, a partnership, I talk to Robbie quite often. That's a great opportunity, where resources the city already has in place, can we double up and maybe even match those to help recruit businesses to Tamarind Avenue? Right-of-way use and guidance, staff time, et cetera. That's detailed out in your, in your executive summary. All these are in there. And then longer-term, establishing a community land bank program, which is a need. And I'll, and I'll say it's probably almost a vital need at this point because of what's happening around Coleman Park. But that is a major initiative that we are working to get underway as soon as possible, primarily Rise leading that effort. And then establishing a fresh food market, safety. If you can't have a conversation, if, if, you cannot have a conversation with a community about anything else if their neighborhood isn't safe. So safety is a key piece for us. And Mayor James, I will take you up on your recommendation to meet with our new chief. I've met him, but I haven't had a formal conversation with him, and I'm looking forward to that. And then education, Coleman Park, the new park and community center, I think is about to open soon. And there are great opportunities there to partner with Parks and Rec and even community events to bring some positive impact to that area. And with that, that is the end of my presentation, and I am happy to answer questions.
Well, thank you for getting through that. I also want to thank you for the, the partnership and the attention of the philanthropic community coming to this discussion. Historically, public-private has meant the private sector, you know, developers and other for-profit entities. And it's only been of, of recent, yes, the, the philanthropic sector has made certain investments in our community health and, and that type of thing. But to actually proactively consider a major investment of, of the scope that you're talking about here, I, I think is, is relatively novel. And so I appreciate the, the ingenuity, the out-of-the-box thinking that Quantum and, and the, what have you guys call yourselves, venture philanthropy? Whatever you got, yeah, whoever you call yourself, but I appreciate your, your, your being there for us and for the city. Because, again, not to belabor the point, but to belabor the point, considering what was put in place intentionally in these neighborhoods, it requires that kind of big out-of-the-box thinking. So thank you.
It's my pleasure.
Commissioners, any other comments? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much, Raphael, this is really amazing. And I'm hoping that you can come to the Historic Northwest next because I think that there's so much, so many similarities between these neighborhoods. I, when I look at the early plans of West Palm Beach, I mean, there's just, it's so hard to overcome that, the number of years that it will take, even though it's one of our top priorities, are these neighborhoods that need, you know, more, the infrastructure and the sidewalks, grocery stores, you know, if there's just, it's impossible to think about how we could do that alone without partners like you. But I, I think one of the things I noticed in the Northwest, and I've worked with OJ quite a lot, we've gone on a walk of Lincoln Road to see some of the things that have worked well there with the neighbors and getting them involved. And I think one of the things I noticed in the Historic Northwest is not as many owners as maybe some of our other neighborhoods. And there's maybe landlords that don't live there, don't care as much about, you know, what the lock looks like. They just want to be finding a tenant. And so I think that that presents a challenge with the turnover in these neighborhoods and maybe not having the advocates that some of our other neighborhoods have. So I'm curious if you have, you know, you started, you talked a little bit about the community engagement you're doing. And I'm, I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit more about how you're getting the community engaged in a neighborhood that maybe won't be their permanent residence or, you know, that they haven't ever been asked to be involved before and what that has looked like for you.
That's a great question, Commissioner Fox. So Coleman Park has about a 30% homeownership ratio, which I think is higher than most other communities with similar economic characteristics. So that is an advantage. There's a lot of what we'll call legacy owners that are not necessarily that on paper. So, you know, heirs' rights, meaning it was a, it was a parent or grandparents or aunt or uncle's home that has been passed down to them or a couple of times down. That, helping establish that legal ownership because that's where they live and that's where their family has lived, is an important element of, of increasing homeownership in the community. And that's something that we're working on. And I know, I don't know anybody that's more integrated in the neighborhood than, than OJ is. Regarding the absentee owners and, and getting to those folks, it's hard. I mean, community engagement is hard. The beauty of having the purpose-built communities model there is that is what they do best, is they work hand-in-hand with the community, which slows down the process so people can engage. It slows down the process so we avoid, to the, to the greatest extent possible, gentrification of the community. Because I, what I should have led with is this is an anti-displacement program. Yes, gentrification is going to happen. Yes, prices are going to go up, but they're going up everywhere. We are trying to speed resources to the table so we can make these investments now before things get out of reach. And that's everywhere, that's everywhere in South Florida, for sure. So outreach is done with community surveys. We're working on creating many opportunities for people to come out and participate. And maybe that's a less formal form of public engagement, but it's where people really tend to speak up. I think about the things that happened in the Northwest, like, like the barbecues at Seventh Street Square. One of the, I, I think the best ribbon cutting of all the ribbon cuttings I've ever been to was at Hamburger Haven. The whole community came out there, that was remarkable. And so much, so many conversations were around the momentum in the neighborhood. And I think that we, we want to replicate that type of community engagement, where we're celebrating the place and in doing so, inviting the people out to participate with us and engaging them there. Because a lot of folks are just tired of being asked what they want. And they, they've said what they want. And that's why we're trying to get things going, even if they're, even if they're the most simple, random act of kindness type of thing, of, of right now, today, planting wildflowers in the public space and giving people that wow factor, that does show that we're committed and that there's momentum. So when we come forward with these bigger initiatives, there's not hesitation and that gap of trust. I hope that answered your question.
And on that point, the, the gap of trust, and if you think about where these communities have been and how they got there, you can better understand now why there's, and, and, and while the people who were around in 1920 aren't around, their, their relatives are, their, their heirs are, their descendants are, and they've heard the stories about why there is such distrust of, of city government. I mean, this is a city that, you know, basically screwed them, for lack of a better, better word, for years. So why should they trust city government? So that's a hurdle that we have to overcome as, as city leaders, unfortunately, but it, it's understandable. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I appreciate the quote that you started your presentation with, talking about the importance of partnerships of nonprofit organizations. I've seen firsthand the benefits that can come from that. And so, you know, what I wanted to follow up on was this partnership. I was extremely excited to see if we're going to lose you in the DDA, that you moved over to this venture philanthropy opportunity to, you know, bring your experience in city planning to philanthropy. And so what is it that either the city has already been doing that we can ensure that we continue those efforts? Or is there something that in the future we can expect that you're going to be coming to us and saying, hey, as our partner, this is what we're going to be needing?
Great question, Commissioner Lambert. And yes, I, I, I'm really pleased to still be working in my city, I'll just say that. And with such a great team. So what can we keep doing? Let's, let's do the very, very most important basic things first. Community safety, public realm, aesthetics have the big, big impact. And we can only control to a limited degree what the private sector does. I mean, that's zoning, it's land use, it's incentivizing or disincentivizing things, but the market's going to do what the market's going to do, no matter how hard we try. So I think the best way for us to collaborate is, is bringing these investments that are going to shape how the community lives in their neighborhood, and that is the public spaces. The park of Coleman Park, streetscapes, street lighting, we did that, we did that. Commissioner Ward joined us to do the safety audit walk. We've compiled that, we had about 11 or 12 people, a great cross-section of younger and older, of male and female. That's one thing we're going to bring to you and say, can we get help on improving lighting, on improving sightlines? On slowing vehicles a little bit down on Tamarind Avenue? These are key pieces. Longer-term, we need to improve, Coleman Park has one of the highest per capita transit ridership programs. Rose trolley. I knew they were really good, but I didn't really understand the impact of the work that Tanya and Terry and their team do. It's beyond, way beyond transportation. They are a social services safety net, for lack of a better term. But improving transportation options for that neighborhood is a key goal. And that's, I think, you know, part of that is also the county, and I've had a conversation with Palm Tran. But that's helping people get to their daily needs. You know, when you have, 30% of the households have no automobile in Coleman Park. The vast majority of the others have only one. So if mom or dad, or single mom or single dad is at work, that car, that household has no car. And if there's an older or younger person there, a sibling, et cetera, they can't get to what they need to get to unless they get on a bus, a bicycle, a rose trolley, or their feet. When you consider that it's a food desert, that's a real challenge. To get to a grocery store and buy real groceries, not something, you know, wrapped in plastic on a shelf in a corner store. That's not groceries, and we need to help bridge that gap.
Yes.
Just a quick follow-up, it's interesting, you know, you said a long list of very important things, and I'm grateful for that. But the very first one you said was safety and aesthetics. And, you know, certainly we're familiar with the broken window syndrome and, and things like that. But I think it's interesting that our next presentation is on the pavement condition index and just talking about how important that is. And we think like, oh, aesthetics, that just makes us feel good, that's just the icing on the cake, but that's really important. I'd be interested if you have any data or research on that as well.
There's a, there's a ton of data, and I'll, and I'll provide it to, to you all, that describes how community aesthetics and beauty affect people's perceptions of their place. So safety is, is in two pieces, it's real safety, that's data, that's crime data that your law enforcement community tracks over time. Part one and two crimes is, I think, what you guys call them, right? Crimes against people and property, that's, that's real safety. But there's also perceived safety, which is a very, very big piece of how people feel about their neighborhood. Right, if I'm, if, if I'm a father in a neighborhood that I feel is unsafe, I am not letting my kids go out and play. That decreases their physical activity, it shrinks their social circle. It takes away so many things from them as what we would think of as being a, a holistic, connected, community, social experience. And social isolation is a major driver of, of, of poor health outcomes for young and old people. So that is really the foundation of community development is safety. And not just the real data, but the perception of it. And, and improving the look and feel of public spaces greatly improves how people live in their neighborhoods. Even, even if the crime data barely moves, the, the way people think of their place changes. And when more people get out in it, that actually drives the crime data down.
Commissioner Warren?
Thank you. Dr. James Green from the county created an Economic Mobility Summit last year, late last year. And that was the first time, Raphael, that I heard you go into this information. And you did have an opportunity during that summit to provide more detail about the Northwest neighborhood in Pleasant City and Coleman Park and all of the historically black communities here in West Palm Beach. And during that time, it was very stunning to hear the comprehensive way that you pulled together all of this information. Because there's so much that people take for granted. So I do appreciate the information. And it, it's still, it's still, my heart is pounding in my chest right now today. Just in retrospect of how deliberate the exclusion was. And how there's still barriers that are being overcome today, more than a century later. But that was by design. And I'm hopeful of the information that we've received, and I'm hopeful about our leadership, and I'm hopeful about the intentionality that we will have to put these policies in place to help to overcome some of the challenges that are, that we're still being faced with today. And the intentionality for an inclusive environment that provides for everyone to have a, a place. To, to have a place where they belong. And to not feel that they do not have an opportunity here. Because West Palm Beach, when it was founded, was predominantly consisting of Negroes. Predominantly consisted of, the, the Negroes that, that were referred to in your slides. So I think that we need to be much more deliberate today just to overcome the things that we've seen. So I'll stop there.
I completely agree. And while this is a, this plan contemplates one, three, and five years, I think we can have a meaningful impact, Commissioner Warren, in two to three years. Being realistic. And then, and then with the purpose-built model remaining in the, in the community to help, to continue that engagement, as Commissioner Fox brought out, brought up. I think what took 100 years to do, that's unfair, that's unfair to leadership in this city. What took 60 or 70 years to do, I think we can, we can significantly undo in a decade. And, and that's about all the time we're going to have. In, in, in the current market, I don't need to tell you all, I mean, West Palm's being written up internationally. We need to move as fast as we can to work with. We need to move as fast as we can to work with this community and other communities to bring the investment. And if I can, if I'm be bold enough to make an ask, I mean, you all know I ain't shy about this stuff. As you go into your budget process in May, and pray that the state doesn't act on its threats, is to prioritize in your capital improvements budget and other budgets, investments to go into Coleman Park and its neighboring communities. If you have a CIP and a five-year roadway plan, which I know you're getting ready to come up, jump those projects up to the top, because that will accelerate the process of our investment and will recognize the impact of Quantum's board's commitment of putting millions of dollars on the table into this exact project to make this community thrive again. Particularly that Tamaran Avenue corridor and bringing the businesses back there. You know, you've got neighborhood renaissance with several projects underway there. Some of them have ground-floor retail, they have above-ground residential. This is a meaningful change. This is an opportunity for a meaningful change. And I have to call out, I want to call her your assistant city administrator, but Jennifer Ferriol, for being such a great partner with me as I've been building this plan up. She's been a great advisor and a great partner in helping us really get our heads around the need. And, you know, that's a partnership I think that we can work fast on.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. Yesterday, most of us were at a lunch for the fund, and awards were given for different police activities. And the bike unit was awarded the unit of distinction, and that is something that has only been about a year. It's the bike unit that basically is Pleasant City, the historic northwest. It's been about a year that they've been in action. And to me, it's really been dramatic to see the changes in the neighborhood and the changes of the feelings that people feel, like what you're saying. It's not just about being safe, it's about feeling safe. It's about feeling like your neighborhood is being taken care of and that you are not afraid to have your kids walking down the street at night. And so it's really been a game changer, and I hope that you will be able to discuss, you know, some of your plans with them, because I hope that that program will only grow in the coming years. And also, to your point, I just wanted to thank you for the shout-out to Rose Trolley. There's no bigger supporter than I am of Rose Trolley and the work they're doing. And, you know, we will be putting out an RFP shortly for our mobility needs, taking the place of the trolley. And just hearing what you're saying, it's so important that we continue to have the transportation that is going to what we're calling the equity zones. Because for many years, as much as I loved the trolley downtown, it was very sporadic in other places in our city that need the transportation the most because they don't have grocery stores and they don't have cars. And so I'm just very happy that you brought that up so that we could all hear it while we're considering, you know, what our next steps are going to be in terms of mobility. And thank you so much again for the presentation.
It's a pleasure. You know, what's interesting is, as I look at our, I think about our state and the direction it's gone in, and one of the first things that our current governor attacked was the teaching of history. And I see why. If people know the true history, what it represents is a call to action, right? When you see the intentionality, the deliberate discrimination, it does represent a call to action to rectify that wrong. So, but if you're ignorant of the history, you know, you don't really feel the sense of urgency. And I'm disappointed that planner, correct me if I'm wrong, Raphael, was from Harvard, right?
Yes, sir. He was, yes. He did quite a lot of planning in Florida and other mid-sized cities like West Palm Beach, including Lake Park, St. Petersburg.
What he probably never anticipated is that a Negro would be mayor of this city. Okay. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Raphael, one final ask. I know you gave me the digital drive. Is there any way you could print up just those pages from the report, that master plan, and distribute just those pages to me and the commissioners, just so we have the hard copies?
Absolutely, Mayor. I'll actually have them printed in a higher resolution format, and I'll give them to you electronically as well.
I may actually want to frame them and put in my office. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Mayor, if I could before, although this doesn't relate directly to Raphael, it's very rare, and this is an exception, where I publicly and probably privately pat myself on the back, but I just feel compelled to take this opportunity to do so. Because I sat yesterday, and Commissioner Fox mentioned, you know, about the bike unit and them getting that award. And I sat there probably with one of the biggest sense of pride in my job as county, uh, county.
Watch out now.
Whoa. Freudian slip, Freudian slip, city administrator. Boy, that was not good. Well, I think that shows.
We'll hear about that later.
For all of those listening, I think that goes to the fact that giving myself public accolades doesn't come natural for me, so that's a Freudian slip. Let me clear the record on that. But what I intended to bring up is that being one of my proudest moments as city administrator, to see the bike unit be recognized. And what is probably only known to the mayor is that that expansion of the bike unit is one that I did battle with the formal administration. I know Chief Matty is aware of this, to bring that bike unit to be expanded in the north end. I was fought tooth and nail about that, had to pull in the mayor. And using the mayor's terminology, he had to come in and big-footed. And therein is how we got it expanded. And to see how successful it is and how well-received it is, I mean, it's something that, as your city administrator, C-I-T-Y administrator, you know, I just couldn't be more proud as I hear the residents talk about that bike unit. And I went over to one of the events to the Mangoyan residents, where we had all of the shooting and whatnot. And to hear the residents express how much difference it makes to have a cop on a bike riding through that complex, and then to hear the award and to hear the comments today. I mean, it warms your city, C-I-T-Y administrator's heart, and I'm going to leave it at that.
Ms. Johnson, thank you for those comments. But I thought where you might go, as a daughter of this city, how do you feel?
I can't express that emotion right now. It's too emotional, because I've lived a lot of that history, and I just, I can't go there, Mayor.
That's fair. That's fair. Okay. Anything else before we move on? Thank you, Raphael. I truly appreciate. Who? Oh, Commissioner Fox. Yes, I'm sorry.
I did want to give a huge shout-out to Ms. Johnson, because I remember working with you last year as the bike unit was coming online. And it has been an absolute game changer. There's not enough I could say about it. The residents, they need to thank you personally. I'm sure they would if they were watching today, because it has really changed people's lives, and thank you so much for all your work on that.
Okay, for the final time, any other comments? Okay, thank you, Raphael, and Palm Beach Venture Philanthropy for all you're doing. Look forward to working with you in the future. Okay.
Mayor, do you want to pause here? You want us to go right into this upcoming presentation?
You know, we only got twenty more minutes. I don't know. Let's try to power through, if we may. Next item, paving condition index update. Valbrak. Thank you. Lot of work to do. Good to see you.
Are you freezing? I'm a frozen little ice cube here.
Yeah, I'm cold today, too.
Okay.
Okay, good morning, Mayor, Commissioners.
Before we go on, Ms. Johnson, I'm getting complaints that it's cold in here. Is there any way to adjust the temperature in this room? Someone can look into that. But I'm sorry, go ahead, Kevin. We'll start, yeah.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. We're going to talk about our pavement condition indexing that we just recently completed. The previous one was done in 2018. It's been a long time since that time, since we've done one. And so we were able to finally get a new one done. I think we did a better job this time. And we want to show you what we, how we developed that, as well as what the results were and what our thinking is as far as how we're going to utilize this data to prioritize the roads that we need to repave in the city. So we'll give you some background information, what the criteria was. We'll show you what the index scores are, as well as an overview of the GIS website that the public will be able to access when that gets put up on the city's website. So first of all, we had an RFP that we put out in December of twenty-three to get a firm that can do a pavement management services for us. And we had four different proposals. We went through a selection committee. And we ended up with roadway asset services as a selected team. Engineering was working with Public Works, as well as now we hired roadway asset services who are on a Zoom call here in case there's any kind of questions that we want to ask them about technical data and the way it was collected. But basically, they have very high-technical 360 camera that runs around, as they drive around the city, that gathers all kinds of, like, data on elevations and everything and the conditions of the road to, you know, do a number of different factors that they put together. And then we now analyzed all that to determine how much easier those weighed, to determine what eventually a PCI was going to be. A hundred is perfect, zero is bad. So basically, there's 260 center lane miles throughout the city that they drove through and gathered all of this data. And so, that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Vladimir to talk about the criteria that they used and how they determined what those factors were.
Thank you, Mr. Valbrak. Morning. This is Vladimir Geno, Capital Improvement Plan Manager. I'm warning Mayor and Commissioners. So as we talked about the criteria for the pavement condition index, there are certain items that are analyzed in order to arrive at that score. So we analyze what is rotting. Just, it's not a familiar term every day. So that looks at the asphalt, and that sometimes is caused because of the base. But also, the asphalt can face, can fail, causing rotting. And this is what the picture is depicting. Also, we looked at weathering. We look at how many potholes are on the road. Patching, those potholes, how many patches are there? Bleeding is a term, because when they make the asphalt, they use a binder to keep it together. And in due time, if they use too much of the binder, that can come up in the asphalt and make the road slippery. So that is part of what is analyzed to develop that score. And also, we look at various cracking. It could be longitudinal, transverse, or they are what we call alligator cracking. And those are criteria that are measured in length, quantity, and also the density of it to help develop that score. So when we went through the index, as the vendor helped us out, we analyzed that ninety percent of the roadway network is in fair to good condition. And at the time of the PCI evaluation, the average score, PCI score that the city has, is seventy-one. For comparison, the national average of PCI index is about sixty-five. And our city roads are categorized in the following classification. We look at arterial. Arterial is heavily traveled roadway, meaning that they can withstand an annual, an average annual daily traffic of about seventeen thousand trips per day. We have collectors that are moderate, low to moderate capacity, which serve to move traffic from local street to arterial roads. And then we have local streets, which are lower traffic volume type. And then also, we have the hallways that are mostly for pedestrian usage. Based on the data collected, as we mentioned, the average was seventy-one. And this is how Kevin mentioned earlier, a hundred is good, zero is bad. So this is a chart that helps us to understand the condition that we have. So we see in the map, I mean, the graph, that about twenty, we have twenty-five percent of the roadway, which is in very good condition, thirty-four percent in satisfactory, twenty-nine percent in fair. And then the lower number, seven, one, two, in lower factors, that we fall from poor to serious conditions. So how does the yearly budget affect the PCI as a whole? And we'll talk more into that, because there are slides in further that will further explain this. So currently, when we look at our budget, we projected to spend about five million for the first year and then two, three million for year two to five. And with that budget, our PCI will average about sixty-one, sixty-six percent of our network. That will be the score of our PCI. But if we were to invest a little bit more, nine point five, nine point two five million, that will help us to stay at a steady state. But we can talk about that a little bit more in detail. So then, with the PCI index, how do we prioritize and get projects done? So with the PCI index, that will be the primary focus of how we prioritize which roads get paved, get paved first, and what pavement project goes online. But also, not only do we have that tool, we also have the CIP criteria that we went over that talks about life, health, and safety, the compliance to legal items, coordination and dependency where we have utilities, other projects where the county, whether federal, those things are funds, grant funding. Also, the treatment that is proposed will be part of the evaluation factor. And not only that, we also have to look at the daily trip, because we talked about arterial roadway gets a lot of traffic. So we have to analyze how that plays and help us to maintain those roads accessible and travel in a way that residents can be proud of. So now with the prioritization of using the PCI index as a primary focus, so this is some of the, how we prioritize. So the woodways that are in seventy-one to one hundred, those are in very good condition. So those ones, we'll continue monitoring them. There are certain treatments where we can overlay the roadway, so that will be a priority four. Mill and overlay, there are different scores, so those fall between two or three. So the higher category will fall on a lower priority. But the ones in the most critical, from thirty to forty-nine, will get a higher priority. And full depth reconstruction is where you have to go and remove all the base, the asphalt, and basically, we construct the roadway. So those will be priority one, and we do have some roads that fall into that score. But that will be the first priority of how we put those projects come online. But we, as we talk about the full depth reclamation, it involves coordination with different agents, departments, for example, utilities. So we have to coordinate that together to ensure that while we're replacing the roadway, if we have utilities that are in critical condition or in subpar condition, then we take that opportunity to get those upgraded, to make it a successful project. So here's, based on the evaluation factors that we received from our consultant, so we provided, the list is a huge list, 260 miles. So we took a sample of the PCI index and provided this year. So there are certain roads, as we mentioned, like, for example, Golf Avenue, between Seventh Street to Eighth Street, PCI index twenty-seven. And I won't go through all the lists, but this is where several of our woodways fall. So we took a sample of that, the So we took a sample of that, the value scores and put it together on that slide. And knowing this, it helps us to see how, when projects get done, how they are prioritized. So for example, from that list, we are coming up with an upcoming paving project list. And the ones that are highlighted were also part of the slide previously that were low numbers that we are currently moving forward with to get those wood mill and pave. So we have about Flagler Drive between Barcelona to Montso. We have Spur Avenue from 15th Street to Lilac Court, Washington Road between El Wado Cortez, and then also Beautiful Avenue from 21st Street to 18th Street, and also Saratoga. So those ones are ones that are coming up online very shortly. And based on that PCI, we've also, we, we have already taken action in getting roads paved. We've paved about six different roadway, Colonial, Beverly Road, Churchill, Francis, 57th Street, and Palm Beach Lake Service Road for a total of about $1.5 million. Those, those were done.
Those are done in 2024. And those, we, we looked at what the previous PCIs were on those that we had deferred doing those. But as we were doing this current assessment, we realized that, hey, we need to go out and do something rather than just wait. And so we went and took care of these roads that had low PCIs previously and still had even worse PCIs in this new assessment.
We have a question from Commissioner, President Ward.
Thank you. Kevin, you might, I guess, tried to clarify that. I'm just looking at the PCIs and then our list of what the condition description is. And all of these seem, I mean, there's a few obviously that are in the low, but most of them are higher than the poor in that fair, in the fair. So are we diverting at all to say, hey, look, the PCI, like, I mean, obviously, you have that Church Hill Road with the asterisks on it, when you're in like Colonial Road with 61. Are we pausing and saying, hey, we realize that there's about 2.5%, of our roads at serious or very poor? Maybe we should be shifting our resources over there?
So we, we did this based on the previous PCIs from the 2018 study that we had deferred doing these. We, we focused on a lot of different other roads during the last five years. And we realized that these kind of got left behind from the previous PCI. Therefore, we have gone out and tried to finish up what was really a high priority from the 2018 PCI evaluation. That's why these particular roads were done. These new PCI numbers are, these PCI numbers that are listed here, those are all now in the 90s because they've all been repaved. And Churchill Road actually had some other dips in it that were necessary to be addressed. And since we had to go out and do that, we went ahead and just repaved that road as well. So there's, the PCI is a primary factor in determining which roads we do. But there are other factors that we also need to consider because it makes things a higher priority because of other issues that may be involved. And that's why Churchill Road was on this list.
Okay.
Thank you. So in order to, you know, talk about budget, earlier, we talked about that graph that mentioned where we would be if we invest certain amount. So in order to, if we were to take the whole PCI index that we're developing today, that, this year, and to build, to, to construct everything, bring everything back to, you know, satisfactory or better, it would take us about $94 million to accomplish that. And currently, we know that we have $4.4 million in the budget. And there will be, as we, earlier, we presented about the sales tax that we were getting $11 million. So those are, were those monies that we conquered to invest into the roadway. And also, we expect from between 2026 to 2029 to get an approximately $10 million in gas tax. So those are the values that we are currently, we can plan on. And that's the numbers that are going to be invested into the project to get, to get roadway paving done and projects coming online. And took along that slide to show an example of a roadway. For example, Lake Avenue was one road that was paved. The picture on the bottom shows the condition that it was prior to paving. And then once it was done, this is how the roadway looked like, freshly asphalt, new striping, you know, easy, easy, easy way to, to travel. And with that, then we will be putting together this website, just like the 2018 was available to the public. This new index will be also available. We're working, currently working with our GIS IT department to help us get those things online. And we expect that to be done sometime by the end of next month, by the, by the month of April. And with that, this concludes my, the presentation. And if we have any further questions.
How frequently do we do this assessment?
Well, we did it every five years previously. And of course, this one was a little bit longer than five years. We finally got it going in 2023 with the contract. But our intention now is to try to renew this on approximately a three-year basis so that we have a better index to judge by what we're going to be prioritizing projects towards. So that's what our goal is, to, to do it on a three-year basis now.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you may know the answer to this. Are we including in the budget a certain amount each year to try to catch up, similar to what we did with Fleet? I don't know what best practices are, but I know when we had to, we had these issues with Fleet, we started just setting aside money. So are we doing that for, for road improvements?
No, Mayor, we are, are not. What we have put in place, and we may be now in the third year. So we look at what is the annual program for road paving. And if there is a gap based on gas tax or sales tax revenue, then we backfill that gap on an annual basis. But we've not yet done like a five-year road paving plan out of the general fund where we, like we're doing with vehicle replacement as a best practice. In my experience with the other municipalities, they actually have, for the most part, fully funded their capital improvement program from the general fund where they have a fully funded general fund capital improvement budget and then with gas tax. So if you look at the two together, their five-year capital improvement program tends to be fully funded. Historically, we have not done that. So we're planning catch up. But could I ask a, a, a budget question here? I'm just trying to understand the numbers on slide 13 because you, you, you got different components here. So the 4.4 million that is currently budget, I'm trying to understand how that differs from the 11 million in sales tax. And then you do a three-year projection on 10 million. So is the 4.4 million a component of one of these?
The 4.4 million is what is a combination of what isn't remaining in the budget from the money that was contributed from the general fund, the gas tax revenues that we received last year, which we receive every year approximately about $2.5 million of gas tax revenue, but only about a million and a half of that gets towards the roadway. Part of it gets allocated towards the Public Works efforts to rebuild, repair sidewalks. And so we have to allocate that appropriately. And then also with the sales tax revenue, there is only so much that's currently left in the sales tax revenue. But we are, we've got this additional sales tax revenue that we discovered. And we're going to allocate an additional $11 million towards a roadway improvement program this coming year so that we can increase that. So that's what this, what these numbers represent. $2 million bucks a year for the sales, for the gas tax roughly is going to get us about $10 million bucks, you know, over the next, till 2029.
Okay, so as part of the budget work sessions, we do one that focuses on the capital improvement program. What we will include in there, if you look at this $94 million price tag overall, then to lay out what a, a plan would look like to fully fund that, identifying the various sources. So we will have that for a discussion point with you and the Commissioner, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert, then President Ward and Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. In this photo here, I don't know if you know this offhand, but what PCI number would you say that was before it was repaved?
Lake Avenue? It was probably in the 50s.
Okay, so then if I go back to your chart on page six, that's in the fair column. I don't know if, so I'm, I'm just looking and thinking about the budget and how much we can allocate towards this. You know, and that's the big bulk of where a number of our roads are, you know, less than satisfactory.
Right, there's probably about, I would say roughly 20 miles, 25 miles of roads that are in not good condition.
And then that, where you listed the priorities, ranked them, it's on page nine, from five to one. I guess I just would want to see that broken down by budget as well.
Well, we would look at allocating the budget that we do have towards repairing those particular roads based on the multitude of factors, the PCI and the other items that, that Vladimir went over as far as, you know, the life and safety, what the, the average daily travel is on that. If it's very, you know, like, obviously, paving Flagler is really important because there's a lot of people use Flagler versus another two-block street, maybe that might be a little bit lower PCI, but we'll eventually get to that, too. But we want to prioritize based on a number of factors that are really, really relevant and meaningful, and that's why we did that. So these priorities are strictly following the PCI ranges. And the cost to do a full-depth reconstruction versus a mill and overlay is significantly different. And a number of projects will get done because we may be doing a utility project on them, which means we're going to have to tear up the road and rebuild it anyways. And some of these roads are included in other grant projects. Like Golf Avenue is in the Roosevelt Estates area. That's going to be covered. And that northeast section that we've been deferring, doing for, and we're going to utilize a raise grant money for that. As well as the Parker Avenue is in a FDOT grant. And 36th Street is also in an FDOT grant that we're going to be doing that, too. So a combination of, of a number of influences that will help us to be able to take care of some of these roads that will allow the other roadway improvement dollars to be utilized on the ones that we are also going to be on the high priority list. So if that explained that well enough?
I understand the concept, and I, I guess we'll dive more into that during the budgeting process, is that when we'll see that?
Yes.
I guess the one thing I want to make sure is that some of these streets that have a very low PCI, that we're not pushing that off five, eight years because we have a project that's coming on down the road. And in the meantime, the roads deteriorate.
No, we really want to, we want to get everything that's below 30 taken care of, for sure. And then below 40, then below 50.
President Ward.
To piggyback on that, it was kind of similar to what I was saying, and I'm glad I, I hear you saying that, Kevin, because it, just looking at the upcoming paving projects, none of them are the ones that are identified as the worst conditions. And so I, I know that there's other factors, and I get you guys have said that. I still am just not clear on what the plan is. Because, you know, people don't take roads that are bad, right? Nobody drives down Pine Wood Ave because they know how terrible the conditions are of Pine Wood Ave. So you'd already have another condition where it's like, well, I'm not going to drive down there. Or people used to not drive down Tamarind for other reasons. Didn't mean the road didn't need to be redone. So I just want to make sure that that is being identified, even though there's other factors. PCI is extraordinarily important. And us as Commissioners, we hear from residents that are looking at streets that are terrible, and they're not looking at those other conditions. So seeing, seeing that it's only 2.5% of our roads are at those worst conditions, I would hope that those, regardless of the other factors, would be, we'd be able to accomplish 2.5% in our first round to get some of our worst roads taken care of.
And, and they will. And the, the roads that we identified in this, on slide 11, we know that we're going to need to go do those because of all of the factors involved. That roughly represents about $2.5 million if you add it all that up. We still have more money in the budget, and we're going to allocate that towards these other high priority ones that are in the 30s and 40s that are on, on slide 10. So we are putting all that stuff together. Slide 11 shows, we're definitely going to go after these. Slide 10 shows, these are next in line, depending on whether it's in a grant project. Or if it's not, we're going to start working on putting together pricing and get those done as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. I wanted to ask if this index already also included sidewalks? I know we had talked about it during the budget process that maybe.
It's, it's a different index altogether for the sidewalks than it is for the road, for the asphalt paving. And we are currently working on doing repairs on a, on a number of sidewalks based on those conditions that were evaluated. And so that is a whole different program altogether. It's part of roadway improvements. We had allocated a, a lot of money this year, like $1.4 million towards sidewalk repairs. We've been doing a $500,000 budget for doing that every year. There is a lot of sidewalks in the city that need to be repaired, definitely. Just like there's a lot of roads that need to be repaved. There's a lot of roads that don't need to be repaved as well, and a lot of sidewalks that don't need to. But when you have a problem, it seems a lot bigger than if you don't. And therefore, we are working very, very diligently. And Public Works is taking the lead on getting sidewalks repaired. They probably utilized about $700,000, $800,000 of that $1.4 million so far. And they've done a tremendous amount of work already this year, and that's going to continue for the foreseeable future until we get all the sidewalks put back together because those are a safety hazard. It's for convenience and safe walking ability for everybody in this, in the city. And we definitely want to work on that as, as quickly and as diligently as we can. Probably more important than paving a road. But yes, we are very, very aware of that, and we are doing the very best we can to try to get that done as quickly as possible.
Yes.
Thank you. My follow-up is different, but I, I wanted to just ask, you know, I'm really excited about the work that's being done in Roosevelt Estates. And obviously, it's been many years in the making. But I'm noticing that some of the roads that are already being worked on, they're already bubbling. There is potholes on them already. So I guess I just want to make sure that whatever we do going forward, you know, it's a lot of money that, you know, a lot of roads that need to be repaired. But I just want to make sure that what can we do to ensure that they're being done right the first time? Because it concerns me that these roads are still being worked on. They're like just brand new, and they already have potholes on them. So, you know, that's obviously more expensive to just keep going and patching things up when it's a brand-new road. So I just want to make sure that, you know, citywide, we're making sure that the money that we're spending is being spent, you know, wisely and that we're able to maintain it.
Absolutely. We, we certainly don't want to have poor workmanship on any of the work that's being done. I would say that 99% of the roads that we do repave are done satisfactorily. Sometimes there may be some anomalies that have been occurring that were potentially avoidable but are also needed to be addressed after they occurred. And that's something that we are also doing is to make sure that we rectify those situations as readily as possible as well. And I believe we have been doing that in the Roosevelt Estates area. So 7th Street was a repaving, it was actually a full-depth reclamation job. And that was something kind of a, a different approach altogether. I think overall, I think it's turned out very well. We did get final acceptance on it. And I think we're, we're probably pretty good to go with that right now. But if there's any other further concerns, we'll, obviously, we'll be made aware of those, and we'll need to go out and address those. Lake Avenue is in perfect condition, doesn't have any problems whatsoever.
Just, Mayor, if I could have a couple of points of emphasis.
Yes.
One on that, Armando Fons, Assistant City Administrator, is when we have work that gets done, it typically is going to have a warranty period, I believe it's about a year, so that we can get contractors back out to, to make those repairs as needed. And secondly, if we do have a contractor that's doing, that's done subpar work, that's going to be noted, and we'll make sure we don't give them any further work. Another point of emphasis on the budget, we talked about, you know, 93 million, 94 million. As was mentioned, Parker Avenue is a project that's getting funded through grant funds, as is Roosevelt Estates and some others. So those are big chunks of dollars that will help reduce the, the burden on, on other sources like general fund and the gas tax. sources like general fund and the gas tax. So as we go through the budget process and have those discussions, we'll be able to look at those grant dollars and subtract from that overall need. And, and then finally, again, I want to emphasize that although the PCI, the, the condition index is the primary driver here, there are, you know, you are going to see circumstances where we're going to be doing other roads that are in not the worst condition because of other factors, as, as Kevin mentioned, like, like utilities are being done, or that there are major arterial roads that, that drive a lot of traffic, and we've got to get those done first. So you will see some of that, but as, as Kevin said, the ones that are the lowest PSI will be priorities over the next twelve to twenty-four months, I would say.
Armando and Kevin, I would like for you all to send someone out at Roosevelt Estate. I mean, we have just invested too much time and effort into that neighborhood, you know, with trying to get as many of those roads repaved, and let's go out and take a look to see if we have potholes on roads that have been paved here recently, so that we can take whatever action needs to be taken. Let's not wait till we get a complaint from a resident. We just heard the Commissioner mention it. Let's go out and take a look at it.
Absolutely.
Any other questions on, on this item? Commissioner Lambert.
Just a comment, I just want to say thank you, Mayor, to you, to the staff and administration for taking this on, because it, while I understand that there are other factors that will go into the decision-making process, having this data is so helpful and really helps us to respond to residents and stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, I don't have anything under Mayor's Matters. Commissioners, you all have anything for the good of the, anyone have anything for the good of the order?
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that in our first presentation, you mentioned possible legislation looking to eliminate property taxes. Thank you. I also have been hearing a lot about the elimination, the possible elimination of CRAs.
Yeah.
And I was just wondering if, if, when we get an update on the other, if we could get an update on that as well, you know, that'd be a big impact.
Yeah, and just as a, a general rule, when these pieces of legislation get on our radar, we have lobbyists up there in Tallahassee who are, it's on our watch, their watch list. A lot of ti- also, a lot of times, these issues are on the League of Cities list as, as well. So as we get updates from either our lobbyists or League of Cities, we will commit to sharing that with you all. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, it's really early in their process, and the League, every Monday morning, does updates on the items that they're specifically engaged in and following, and we can certainly provide those updates to you as well, because they have a, a very strong voice as a unified entity.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else for the good of the order? All right, thank you all, this meeting is adjourned.